All the being to water. Hi. Roll call please. Chairwoman Negarada, here. Vice Chair Benaro.
Here.
Vanda.
Here.
Gadda.
Here.
Resiado.
Here.
Swamin. Here. Sonnions. Lethalport. Here. Sangare.
Here.
Dureza. Harris.
Here.
Attorney Marinaldo.
Here.
Who would stand for pledge allegiance? A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The sunshine notice is waiting to direct requirements of the open public meeting act, chapter twenty-two thirty-one P L nineteen seventy-five known as the sunshine of the notice of this meeting was published in December first, nine twenty-two edition of the November five and the November forty-sixth, nine twenty-two edition of the Star Ledger. Copy of the annual meeting is posted on the double town hall bulletin board and on the township website. Thank you. Communications. There's any. Chairman's comments. This evening, I already hear there's a lot of rumbling. If we could have kind of one person speak at a time, this goes for this void and this goes for the audience. One person at a time when you're called upon. So this way, our court reporter is able to take correct minutes. And thank you for that. Approval of minutes for Thursday, February twenty twenty-four.
Motion.
Do I get? Roll call. Vice Chair Negarada, I mean Chairman Negarada. Yes. Vice Chair Benaro.
Yes.
Vanda.
Yes.
Gadda.
Yes.
Resiado.
Yes.
Swamin.
Yes.
Lethalport.
Yes.
All right, the bill list from March twenty twenty-four, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second. Roll call. Chairwoman Negarada. Yes. Vice Chair Benaro.
Yes.
Vanda.
Yes.
Gadda.
Yes.
Resiado.
Yes.
Swamin.
Yes.
Lethalport. Abstained. Resolutions to be memorialized, they aren't on this evening. So we'll start with our new business. New business of preliminary investigation. For two fifty-four, two fifty-six, two fifty-eight, two sixty, sorry, two sixty, okay, and one forty-three Valley Street. Are we ready to proceed?
Yes, Chairwoman. My name is Dean Donatelli, for the record. I speak loud because there's no microphone. And I'm here with Alex, I'm the redevelopment attorney for the township. Mr. Dory is the town's planner. He's going to need a couple moments to set up, but while he's doing that, I'll just kind of steal his introduction. Hopefully, if you can't hear me okay, just like we know, okay, I'll try to speak up. So the first matter is the, is an area in need of redevelopment study for the former, former old Bellville Hall, the former Elks Building and the building behind it fronts on Valley Street. And you were, the, 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 the council, the board will recall that this, the two lots, the old Bellville Hall, doesn't work. Better? So, better?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, so, so, old Bellville Hall and the Elks Building were previously studied as a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment. And for reasons for allowing access for service uses related to a potential redevelopment there, as well as just kind of square off the property, the third lot fronting on Valley Street is, is going to be studied here tonight. So the three lots are going to, two lots will be kind of re-studied, refreshed, and the third lot will be added. And Mr. Dory is ready to go out? Okay, so, I just sort of refreshed the board's memory, the, an area in the redevelopment designation is appropriate where the board can find and recommend to the council that properties meet the criteria in the local redevelopment housing law. Mr., Mr. Dory will explain to you what he's done, what was circulated to the board. Hopefully, you had a chance to review it, he's going to summarize what it says. With that, if you have no questions for me, I'll hand it over to Alex.
Good evening. Alex Dory, professional planner. So as Dean accurately summarized, we were here not too long ago for the initial old Bellville Hall, the Elks. So we've taken some consideration after that to assess the surrounding environment. So for a recap, the, this is what I presented last time I was here, was initial resolution authorizing the study back in August sixteenth. This was the prior study area, consisted of two tax lots, block eighty-seven oh one, lot nine, as well as lot ten, which is the former Elks Club and old Bellville Hall. As we see here in this one, it's a map, the zoning map, it's the BG zone, commercial residential McShus district, right along Washington, as you can see here, illustrated, it's a through lot, meaning it has frontage along Washington and Valley. Again, this is a recap, this is what was presented last time during the initial study. So a lot of this information, we break it down per lot, what the tax type is, the address, the owners, the M O T four assessment, the zone, land use, as it was observed, the lot area, and this is for lot nine, and this would be the old Elks Club. So the next slide was the local housing redevelopment law, criteria that was met. With that being said, we felt it met three of the criteria, which is known as B, D, and H. And we broke down the abandonment, obsolete, faulty design, and smart growth. And we showed some exterior photos, as well as some interior photos, you know, that I took back in December of twenty twenty-two. I had been back out to site since, nothing's changed, but tears still remains. So we'll just kind of go through these, this is front, back, you know, some top-down with the drones, aerial shots, some interior conditions, if you recall. So again, the board found the last hearing that it met the criteria in need of redevelopment. And again, we do the same thing for lot ten. In this particular property, we felt it met the local housing redevelopment law, A, B, D, and H. Substandard building, given the condition, abandonment, obsolete, faulty design, as well as smart growth. And we have some, some photos of what that building looked like in December, and current condition hasn't changed as much. So these are the photos we presented. Again, it's a through lot, going to Valley. So, and then this is what we summarized during, during the initial site visits and the criteria, how it met those criteria. So what changed? Back in September, we were authorized to study the additional lot as we assess potential plans, so what could go there? There is a property to the rear of the Valley Street. So we've conducted a new study area to incorporate one forty-three Valley Street. So this, 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 this property is block eighty-seven oh one, sorry, I typed it up here, it's lot eight point zero one. It's at the bottom, one forty-three. The total acreage of these three sites here will be just a little over half an acre, point five nine. And it's going to be the area off to the, the right, the smaller property, if you recall, the, the two initial properties were through lots, so the, the little square hanging off to the right on the screen. As we see, it still falls within the BG zone. This particular property is not a through lot. For the, the overall assessment, one forty-three Valley Street, it's a commercial property, its zerb land use was, or apparently is an auto garage. So when we did this initial study for the local housing redevelopment criteria, we believe it needs section three of that criteria. And essentially, section three, as it's, as it reads in the full print, is a redevelopment area that may include land, buildings for improvements, which of themselves are not detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, but the inclusion of which is found necessary with or without change in their condition, effective redevelopment of the area in which they are part. So this particular property is, is an auto garage, it's, it's on the screen here. And this was taken back in February fourteenth of this year. So the sites next to it with open vehicles, those were the initial study with the old Bellville Hall and, and the Elks Club. Again, they're through lots, so these properties above this one. So when we talk about the potential of what could be developed here, when we see this site, we think it's important to maybe include this into the study area for, for reasons of just compatibility and the overall use. There's nothing inherently wrong with the building, it's not a substandard building, it's unsafe, not the latridated, you know, the conditions that you associated with the, on the Elks Club and, and old Bellville Hall. This, this building doesn't have that condition to it, it's just, we feel incorporating this particular lot will help effectuate a better build-out and an overall better plan for the overall neighborhood. So this is a top-down approach, you can kind of see here, the, the property with the darker foliage is the old Bellville Hall, and the one with the green lawn in the back is the Elks Club. So it kind of wraps around to the side, and there's that automotive garage. Not, not necessarily an overly intense use, but it's certainly, given that it's the only one over there, is, is commanding that area, part of town, so what would go there would have to essentially be compatible with that use. Let's see inside of the building, again, the building's not maintained, it's, it's fairly nice, there's nothing inherently wrong with the structure itself. But when we look at this, and, and what we would find here, is the property question, I believe is necessary to effectuate the redevelopment area because it would increase the frontage along Valley Street for the redevelopment of the adjacent lots nine and ten, with an adequate width to accommodate a double, a drive aisle access and improve the circulation. And this is per the ordinance, section twenty dash one, point six, D two. Essentially, when we look at the current condition along Washington Street, as a planner, I want to reduce the non-curved cuts along Washington Street, potential vehicle conflicts with pedestrians, traffic congestion, you know, making lefts and rights out of there. So to acquire this property off of Valley would allow a potential development to not need a curve cut along Washington Avenue. So if we get that additional width along Valley Street. With that being said, we do have some transition grades from Washington to Valley, so allowing this property would help to kind of, whatever development would be, to, to bring more of the use and intensity, whatever the project may be, to the rear along, along Valley Street, and, and have that at a lower grade to allow for a better pedestrian realm experience, a sidewalk activity along Washington Avenue. When we look at this current zoning, the BG zone, auto body and, and auto repair facilities and storage of vehicles outside are not permitted per section twenty-three dash seven, point eight, D. So when we look at this section of this, to grab this, we bring in non-conforming, pre-existing use out of this zone to effectuate a better build-out for, for the community. Also, what could potentially go on lots nine and ten, we have this NIMBY, not my backyard. So if we're to redevelop lots nine and ten, we're going to have this automotive use in their backyard, or a potential tenant's backyard. So again, it allows what I would call a greater stroke of the brush for desirable visual environment, aesthetically pleasing, and a more of a cohesive project for the overall community. So as a planner, I do feel including this project, though it was a shortcoming during the oversight, if you will, on the initial study, including this project, I think will, will produce a better experience going forward for the community, though, I guess, as stated, section three, the building doesn't need to be unsafe or, or substantial for the public welfare. But again, this, this certainly cures any elements and anomalies that are within the BG zone and allows for a better transition. So with that, you know, I'll conclude, and this was a prior site we had before redevelopment, designation is a mechanism to reverse the site's condition stagnation, those would be the lots nine and ten, this won't help to produce a better project for lots nine and ten. So with that, I'll conclude. As a planner and doing the study, I think section three is appropriate as the site itself is, is tenable, it's a fairly safe and sound structure, it's just not really conducive for the redevelopment of nine and ten without its inclusion.
Question.
Yes.
Why not, you have the property in the front?
In the front?
Right, front of the garage.
That property, when, when we look at the Valley Street, that property, we could try to include that one, but I didn't feel it was necessary, there's nothing inherently wrong with that property, or both properties, but having the ability to reduce the curb cuts along Washington, that, that project in that property itself may not, may not be needed. The Valley Street, if we're going to do a circulation plan or use that's not going to induce curb cuts along Washington, that, that property's certainly going to be needed.
Do you have any other questions for this board? Is the public have any comments or questions for this witness?
I'd like to.
Mr. Sheldon?
Good evening. Michael Sheldon, forty-third Gold Street. There was some discussion on the part of Mr. Dory about eliminating curb cuts on Washington Avenue. How many curb cuts for the affected properties currently exist? From what I recall, there are no curb cuts for the Old Town Hall.
Well, he was responding to my question.
Oh, you, yeah, you had a legitimate, and I, I'm glad you asked it, because I was also going to ask about that, why that other hall property that fronts Washington Avenue isn't being included here, I guess the owner isn't willing to sell, that's probably why it's not, but anyway, that's speculation, my problem. How many existing curbs for the Elks Club and the old Bellville Hall? I think there may be a driveway for the Elks Club, so.
It's very small, but yeah, that's about the only one.
So there's just one curb cut that would be eliminated if this, if this project goes through.
Right, so the, and I don't want to speak too freely, because I'm not an engineer, but there's site triangles and requirements for drive aisles and circulation patterns, so to include this extra little bump out will help to ensure that we can facilitate that kind of movement, you know, with these two lots together, because it would be a larger project. As you can see, currently, the, the property to the left of us has a drive aisle to the rear and, and the parking facilities in the rear off of Valley, much like what would have been happening now with the, the vehicles parked on the gravel. But to ensure circulation and movement, we felt it was necessary to grab that, again, it's a, it's a pre-existing, a non-conforming use in the BG zone, and then whatever we put there would have to, you know, endure that environment with the automotive that shouldn't be in the zone to be able, so to incorporate this, we kind of clear, clean that up, and it certainly allows us a little bit greater flexibility to design a site that, that would work and function efficiently.
Many, many years I've been coming to these meetings, whenever this particular area has been addressed either by the zoning board, planning board, or the council, there always seemed to have been an interest in preserving the old Bellville Hall as part of Bellville's history, but it sounds like what's going to happen now is that, that these three lots will be merged and the whole new lot will be razed. Is, is it safe to say that that's, that's going to happen, the old Bellville Hall will be demolished?
So as it stands right now, the old Bellville Hall and the Elks Club is deemed an area in need of redevelopment, but to design that site, we felt we were short by not having that other additional property. So as it stands now, without this amended, you know, study, the, the old Bellville Hall and the Elks facility, if you recall from last time we were here, it was deemed an area in need of redevelopment. As far as preserving it, I don't know what's going to come there, but we're, we're going to design a plan, if they want to preserve it, they could, if they want to knock it down, that's, that's kind of.
Be a subject for future.
Certainly a future, yep.
Planning board meetings, so the fate of the old Bellville Hall is up in the air at this point?
Yes.
All right, all right. The last thing I wanted to ask, since the LLC took ownership of these two properties, Bellville Ventures, LLC two, there's actually three, there's Bellville Ventures, Bellville Ventures two, and Bellville Ventures three, they're all operating out of the same UPS post office box in Secaucus, box one ninety-one. I've been trying to find for the last couple of years names of people who are actually behind this and haven't really been successful. It's my understanding at the beginning of the year, federal law changed where now LLCs have to disclose principal owners. And at this point tonight, are you prepared to, to, to tell us finally, who are the people, persons or persons who own this, these properties?
So, you asked me this last time.
Yes.
I don't know who owns the LLCs, I'm the city planner with designing the site, that's a little out of my, my lane.
All right, I'm not going to pin you on that, I was realized that this is not probably your purview, but the planning board should be aware of the fact that the, the controlling entities behind these properties.
Where can that come in?
Right, well, but.
Questions only.
Right, but it'd be nice, I think, for us to know who is actually, who is the person,
we can do that in a second.
A person, you know, behind this, it's going to come up eventually, you guys have yet, we'll hear the application for the redevelopment. As I said, Mr. Marinaldo can confirm this, I, I believe that as of January one of this year, federal law now dictates that people can't hide behind LLCs, they have to disclose principal partners and ownership. And I haven't yet found that, the, the LLCs are still, still hiding their identities.
Not an application by that.
All the way.
You come before for site plan, sort of site. Right now, it's actually technically an application by the town itself.
Right, I understand, I understand. But something to look forward to, I'll be here. All right, thank you, thank you.
Are there any other questions for this witness? All right, I mean, none, let's continue. Second.
So, I'll keep it short, and so the, the next step for this board would be to, would be to prepare a resolution vote of whether to recommend that the governing body declare the lots Mr. Dory explained to you as a non-condemation area in need of redevelopment, and that would be considered for, for organization at the next meeting. Thank you.
The, just so we're aware, the, we already did this with the two lots, so we're really just redoing it again and a third lot, if that's your, if that's your wish. So we'll take a, it's a regular resolution, so we'll take a motion, a second, and a roll call, and I'll leave it to you guys to decide as soon as we proceed.
I get a motion?
Motion.
Second. Roll call. Chairwoman Negarada? Yes. Vice Chair Benaro?
Yes.
Vanda?
Yes.
Gadda?
Yes.
Resiado?
Yes.
Swamin?
Yes.
Lethalport?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sweet. So the, the town has.
I'm sorry, I'm here. Representative.
Yes.
Mr. Donatelli, there's two more items that you have for us to know.
Yes, the two items are called master plan consistency reviews for proposed redevelopment plans, which is another step in the redevelopment process. Redevelopment plan is essentially a zoning ordinance for the properties that have been previously studied and declared, it sets forth the zoning for the two lots. The first matter is the former funeral home on Washington Avenue, which is, this is from my, I'm sure.
Is that two seventy-two?
Yes, sorry, yes, yes, I'm sorry, yes, ordinance, so these were, just sort of step back, these were introduced by the council at the last council meeting, and because it's a zoning ordinance, effectively, the change in zoning requires the, the, well, M L U development, redevelopment law requires this board to look at them, look at the plans for consistency review or the master plan, that's a necessary step. So they will refer, and that's the first one. Chairwoman is, is two seventy-two dash two seventy-eight Washington Avenue, which is the former funeral home. And the second one is two oh two and two fifteen Bellville Avenue, that's the former wet, old road bar and parking lot across the street. So Mr. Dory is going to present those plans in sequences, technically not hearing, it's more of a review of the board, but I think this board has generally allowed to speak, comment, ask questions.
Can we do them separately?
However you prefer to do them, whatever you feel is, is appropriate, I think that's
Two seventy-two and two seventy-eight will Washington Avenue.
Thank you.
Again, Alex Dory, professional planner. So if the, the board has a plan in front of them, I would kind of just walk through that plan, and two seventy-two, two seventy-eight Washington Ave, as the council indicated, is the old, has a little funeral home. So with that being said, we'll kind of just dive into the overall plan and, and what we propose as far as the potential for this site. Go ahead and jump to page seven, if you will. So required designs, we'll, we'll kind of just start there for Washington Ave and, and the corridor. We wanted to preserve what was there. If you recall, the study area incorporated the joint property, which is the State Farm property, so essentially, the existing facade there, the funeral home, would just feel a little bit larger. All those unique features, as outlined here on page seven, design requirements will remain, the black awnings, the brick facade, the trim work, all, all of that is to remain, it's just going to be a little bit bigger. So we wanted to preserve that characteristic along Washington Avenue. And then, you know, for the ground floor, we wanted to encourage commercial use and mixed use, reactivate the street gate. Again, as I, I mentioned prior during the, the last moment I spoke for the study area, we want to reduce the curb cuts on Washington Avenue. So the existing drive aisles that are there now will no longer be there, and will have the walkable, commercial, retail space on the ground floor in that same existing facade appearance-wise. With that being said, we'll kind of just jump forward a little bit, we'll go to the bottom of page seven. For nostalgic purposes and just overall community identity, we're, we're going to require that there be some kind of a public art mural commemorating the Sopranos or other art in its location, which would be approved by the planning board. So we do understand there's, there's, there's some, some history associated with the site, given that the site will now be active to the public realm, you know, we wanted to pay homage and so forth in that regard. So not only will the, the, the area, in my opinion, the site itself, look great, but the inside will also have, have some, some unique identity to it as well. We go to page nine, we outline some permitted uses on the ground floor. Retail available for commercial sale, merchandise, prepared foods, you know, that kind of medical office, general office, personal care, some, some generic concepts. We can kind of go down to examples of this, pet shops, veterinary, pop-up storefronts and galleries, dance, physical fitness by way of gym, studios, bars, breweries, banks, financial institutions. See, just generic commercial retail stores and outlets, again, professional and corporate offices. So we outlined that on page nine under permitted uses of three, three B. When we, when we talk about the overall retail uses, as you see on, on part C here, all retail sales and service uses, including the walk-up service, so just ice cream parlors, walk-ups, and food, or car service pickups are, are permitted within the ground floor along Washington Avenue. And then we have what's allowed to be above it. So we, we took care in, in realizing, and we'll reconcile this with the pre-examination and the master plan, the upper floors will be a mixed-use concept where we feel that the site can hold approximately seventy-four units. So with that being said, the upper floors would be about seventy-four units is what will be permitted there. And with that being said, we want to ensure there's plenty of the mini space, it's not just four walls and, and units. So we would like to see some co-working space, you know, obviously, general lobby, separate game rooms, fitness centers, outdoor space, mezzanines, and the like. So within this building footprint of seventy-four units, these amenity features would have to be included as well, so the, it's, it's not just the public realm on the sidewalk, but those that would live here. but those that would live here would also have enjoyment of the property. We talk about prohibited uses. What we don't want to see here is auto, body repair, sales, auctions, dealerships, car stores, gas stations, car washes, private parking lots, self-stores, facilities. We want to ensure that Washington Avenue, any commercial use along that is a general amenity for the community and the overall corridor itself, and that shouldn't be by way of congestion and ISO. So with that being said, we don't want motels, lumber yards, junkyards, schools except for a higher institution facility. We don't think an elementary school is appropriate, there's one, you know, pretty close by. So with that being said, we certainly want to encourage maybe a higher institution if they felt that space was a viable space. But generally speaking, the uses here are more auto-centric, more heavy, light industrial concepts. So on page 10, we kind of go into the overall bulk requirements or the potential build-out scale of this facility. Minimum lot requirement would be 17,000 square feet, ensuring that these lots would not be subdivided off and that we can manifest the continuous facade improvement of the old House of Liberty Funeral Home. Minimum front yard setback along Washington to keep the existing streetscape and continuity and characteristic of Washington would be at zero feet, so you could basically go right up to the property line, ensuring the character of Washington Avenue. Minimum front yard setback to Valley as well would be zero. Minimum side yard setbacks, we think, given the characteristics of the built environment, we have minimum side yard setback of three feet. The minimum rear yard setback would be four feet. So we don't want it to be too small and out of character. We want to help continue that urban built environment, if you will. Again, the number of dwelling units would be 74. The maximum building height from Washington Avenue, which is, I guess, the way we see is we don't want it to be out of character or too large or too small. I think five stories is appropriate on Washington Avenue for this site. So along Washington Avenue would be five stories. Again, we had that topography drop along going towards the rear to Valley. So given that changing grade, because it's so drastic, that essentially equates almost two stories of drop. So along Valley Street would be seven stories, but from Washington it would be five. We'll go to the bedroom counts here on page 10. The number of two-bedroom units would be 25%. So again, if we're doing 74 units, that's 18 and a half. The number of one-bedrooms or studios would be 75% of the total building makeup, which in this case, if there were to be 74 units, would be 55. So we did that, and we felt that if we stayed true to the 25-75% ratio, a one-to-one parking requirement would be appropriate. When we start to see the three bedrooms, we start to see a little bit higher demand and use of vehicles, there might be, you know, a lot more individuals living there that need a car. A studio, a one-bedroom, a two-bedroom, you know, a starter family, if you will, or, you know, a couple that needed office space. That's generally how we'll see that makeup manifest. So staying away from the three bedrooms, we felt that a one-to-one parking ratio was sufficient. We have a minimum floor-to-floor height for the commercial will be 10 foot, as well as the residential, ensuring, you know, it's not squished or, you know, too tall and taking away where somebody says, oh, I said five stories. So with that five stories, we went ahead and we put a mechanism in there to ensure the building isn't too tall. That five stories on Washington equates to 60 feet vertical. And that seven stories along Valley would be 90 feet. For maximum building coverage and impervious coverage, we felt 90% was where we needed to be. We don't need to make the entire lot impervious or cover the entire lot. That 10% could be the strips, you know, some accent lawn features in that regards. But generally speaking, most of Washington Avenue is covered 100% impervious coverage, unless we have these unique opportunities where the lots are through lots, like we just saw with some yard in the back. Apparently speaking, most of the properties along Washington are 100% paved over or built out. So we wanted to keep again with the character of what's there, but, you know, a little bit more reasonable. We talked about the parking requirements, given there will be some commercial uses within the facility and some residential. The non-residential parking requirements, we felt three was necessary, given the size and scope and parameters we set for commercial. For 500 square feet or more, it's going to require some parking. So we were looking for, you know, some multiple amenities, commercial space that could possibly reactivate the ground floor. So if a commercial space wanted to be larger, that's when the parking requirement would start to kick in once you break over that 500 square feet of commercial space. The minimum residential parking requirements, again, given the 74 units, we felt we need some visitor parking. So we have eight visitor parking, so a total of residential will be 79. Again, we have 74 units. We have the standard requirement for EV stations to be put in. We have minimum bike storage, one per residential unit is going to be required. And then along Washington Avenue, the curb cut that we're eliminating and the overall linear parking, given that we want to keep the commercial use as small, we are encouraging that those spaces along, and we've measured, would be an additional four that would be affiliated with any commercial use. So anyone driving on Washington could pull up, those should be four spaces that's available. The access again for the residents will be off into the rear. Any employees that need to come to work in there, their access would be off the rear into Washington Avenue. But the general public, there'll be four curb cuts right there, I'm sorry, parking stalls right there to access if they're not walking, any commercial tenant that may be on the ground floor. With that being said, the overall concept of the building itself, we're going to require a rooftop amenity space. I think one of the assets for the community is the potential to capture U of C Skyview. So any development, redevelopment, we want to encourage, you know, some reactivation of the rooftop and just for the residents, not open to the public and their enjoyment. The mezzanine space as well, and the club room, that's going to be a requirement in there for amenity spaces, I'm on page 11, for those who are following. With that being said, we want central air, every unit to have central air. Modern amenities in the facilities are going to be requirements here. And each unit shall contain a washer, dryer, central air, rooftop, mezzanine access, you know, fitness center, yoga rooms, game rooms, pool tables, whatever would be built in that general amenity space, all residents are to have access to that. The parking and loading, again, all the residential parking will be enclosed in a parking garage coming in off of Valley. We'll have commercial employees as well parking in that garage. It will be key fobbed, it's going to be a requirement. And then the trash receptacle, sorry, refuge would also take place on Valley to ensure that there's not interference or a lot of times a day we've done that private hauler. We're encouraging that activity to be done off of Valley Street. That being said, essentially why we're here is the relationship to the existing master plan reexamination report and the goals of Belleville as a whole. So on page 17, we outlined the relation to these plans. When we look at this township developed master plan and the reexamination report dated March of 2021, we have the master plan adopted in January 8, 2009, has been recommended multiple times and reexamined back in January 2019, and again, the most recent, March 8 of 2021. And some of the goals and intents that were outlined is to continue to encourage a wide variety of housing types at a range of the sale and rental levels so that families at all income levels can be housed in Belleville to provide for residential growth at current densities and to promote higher density development in limited target areas. I believe Washington Avenue is a very distinct corridor and where density should be located. We're not trying to relocate 75 units in single detached residential areas. It's certainly appropriate on Washington Avenue. Another goal here is to continually encourage a balance of land uses to include diversified residential areas, commercial areas to serve the residents in nearby communities. So having this mixed-use compatibility, I think we certainly hit that mark there. And then when we look at this, we also have to look at this from a regional network so we could compare it to Newark's master plan and certainly found that it was compatible with their vision. The 2009 master plan encouraged the aging infrastructure and building stock. You know, it's poorly maintained, so have a new, modern building, some of the old characteristics that the community has room to love. There are many vacant underutilized parcels, distinct signs of disinvestment. So we've identified that, and we're, it says there's a lack of new housing opportunities. So this certainly capitalizes on a lot of that language here. We have a lack of brand recognition, so certainly, again, having that funeral home, that iconic look, you know, it's brands, image along the corridor. So we feel that we're hitting a lot of what the township's master plan and reexamination reports pulled out for. When we look at the overall regional plan here for Essex County, is to maintain a safe and efficient road system by eliminating that curb cut. I feel like that's what we're doing, by requiring in the redevelopment plan for trash and refuse to be picked up off of Valley Street. We're maintaining a safe and efficient road system, increase the use of mass transit. So having that one-to-one parking ratio, we recognize that a lot of the community and residents, local as well as as a state collectively, still use our vehicles, but at a one-to-one ratio and walkability and promotion of the bike, one per unit being a requirement there for storage, we hope to see more use of mass transit and boots on the ground, if you will, and that sidewalk reactivation. With that being said, going to the state plan, although it has been encouraged now this year to go under a reexamination for the state redevelopment redevelopment plan. Right now, the current plan is the 2001 state redevelopment plan, redevelopment plan. And when I look at this, the entire community is what we call PA1, Plan Area 1, which is responsible for state's development and redevelopment. And it's encouraged, existing infrastructures here, so we want to capitalize on that. You know, going further west, toward the communities and laying down that infrastructure and that development. So to redevelop within a PA1 zone, which is the community's designated as, certainly hits the goals and intents of the state's redevelopment redevelopment plan. With that being said, the Newark's master plan, they recently redone September of 2022, Newark 360. This plan aims to enhance the city's economy by bolstering its economic capital, grow equity, equituring community capital, and improve the environment through initiatives like citywide tree candidates and so forth. So we feel like we're certainly supporting the Newark agenda of 360. Again, we have, sorry, adjacent municipality, putting the mixed use, we're putting boots on the ground and so forth. So we certainly, we're not going the opposite direction of our surrounding municipalities or the state plan, or our own plan. So with that, I do think this plan, at 74 units, again, at the 25-75 ratio, with the required amenity spaces, we can see wholesome living conditions as well as new radibles coming online by way of the mixed use. It's appropriate size, at the five in the front, seven in the rear for stories of Valley. Reducting the curb cut, we ensure the safety and continuous road network of Washington Avenue. And with the requirement of 500 square feet for commercial spaces, hopefully we have some reactivation along Washington Avenue for some viability and having those amenities for these new residents and so forth. So with that being said, I'll conclude, I do think this plan is consistent with the town's master plan and the bulk of this town.
I have a quick comment on page seven.
Yes.
Because I like the whole, the very front. And it says, "Public art mural commemorating the Sopranos," or other art. I don't want "or other art." I think this council has to come up with some sort of ordinance, what is allowed to be painted on buildings.
So I put in there.
We have to approve it.
And its location as approved by the planning board. So the other art would have to be approved, even the art of the Sopranos and this location would have to be approved. It's not to your likings and standards, we don't have to approve it. But as far as.
I don't remember approving next door.
That's totally different from this. This is actually saying they have to approve it.
They can't approve any art in a building or at any location.
Because art is usually subjective. What I think is nice may not be in the art.
So I wanted to make sure that the art went back, because I was aware that that. So having that ability to provide art, I think is a benefit, but to what extent, I think that should be done by the board.
And I'm also going to ask, since our council is here, and you go back and ask that an ordinance be constructed of some sort. So in the future, we have some parameters and some sort of.
I think a totally separate arts board should be appointed for that and taken away from us.
That would be nice, but who knows where that could be led if we don't have an ordinance?
An ordinance would be the first part. I think I overlooked the most important part, I believe, of this plan. The existing facade, though, will make it a little bit larger, the floors, the floor above that, at a minimum, will have to be recessed two feet to make sure that that ordinance stands out so it's not a continuous wall all the way up. So you'll have that recess for the floors above, so.
Sounds nice. Yes.
So through the chair, so Alex. So just to be clear, this vote is just on conforming with the zoning.
Yes.
That's all it's for, it has nothing to do with an agreement, nothing, no meat behind it, no art, no nothing. Just for zoning.
Right. And just for the zoning component to it, we're looking at the bulk requirements, the height, the density. We will all design, you know, but we threw in some of what we put in this plan, you know, the art and so forth, but we're here just for the zoning and that regard. So from a planning standpoint, 90% lot coverage, white building, impervious coverage, you know, the sidewalk setbacks, the height, you know, that's the kind of stuff we're looking at. This would meet the quarters, meet the intent of the master plan and so forth.
But you already validated that.
Yes, and it's in the report on the back pages.
We did the green building designs too, right?
Yeah, that's also a requirement in there, it's actually part of your local ordinance. There is some rebuilding requirements for any area in need of redevelopment to come forward. So there are some green elements that will have to be done in this plan.
Yes.
I was wondering, did you compare for compatibility to Nutley? You said Newark, I mean, Newark's the biggest city in the state of New Jersey. You compared our density to theirs.
It's not so much density, but I'm on Washington Avenue and Newark is fairly close, so that was the comparison.
Nutley's not much difference, much, much further. It's just like, we don't want to turn into Newark, you know?
No.
We like being a township and not a city.
Right, that's why I said the initial corridor and the density is appropriate for this corridor wouldn't be appropriate in us.
And, I mean, it's just my opinion, I feel two bedrooms need two parking spots. I know the project we approved behind a quick check, two bedrooms need two parking spots. To me, I don't know anybody in a two-bedroom apartment that has one car. I lived in Belleville my whole life, and I just don't know anyone that has one car in a household. And especially a two-bedroom. And I would hope that if, I mean, across the street from this project, the town is supposed to build a supposedly a shared services parking deck, I would hope that they institute no overnight parking yet. I don't feel that all these tenants from this building park across the street and then we got school teachers coming to school next day and there's no parking for them.
Yeah, from what we understand about that, and again, this is just hearsay, the school will be, can the teachers come up from a top from Norton, not Norton, Boom? It's parallel.
The Boom is on the side.
Not Norton.
High Street.
High Street, but underneath the first level would be municipal, and it would be us, and it would be me. Again, subject change, who knows, that's what the original conversation was. But we're still waiting on plans from that from the board.
I just feel the lack of parking.
Hey, great.
Any other questions?
Right, do you think we could make it, two parking spots?
For this one? No. Listen, here's the thing, so when we look at different parts of the town, right? So if we're looking at Washington Ave., we're looking at Franklin Avenue. Two very different areas, ones, we're trying to build a more walkable community. The other one, we're really targeting for redevelopment, so if we are, we're going to make it overly, overly in our favor, say, between public spaces, additional parking. Because again, you're in a residential neighborhood, say, on Franklin Avenue, it's all back there. More residential, there's not as much transportation there, there's not a lot of walkability. You're going to need more parking in that area. Down by Washington Avenue, you have a lot of different transit options. You have a lot of ability to walk to different stores and supermarkets. There's buses that'll take you down to Clifton Park and Ride or the Broad Street Station in Newark. The D-Cam bus used to run through, they'd take you right to the Port Authority of Manhattan. So you're going to get people that are going to live down. So you're going to get people that are going to live down there, that are going to be more of a commuter-based. And again, we do the majority of our units as one-bedrooms. And when we originally did the ordinance based on this, and we used RSIS, the way that we wanted it, RSIS was giving us less than one-to-one. That wasn't working for us. So we increased the parking requirements when we did the original ordinance back in 19. So this is an increase compared to what the standard across the state of New Jersey is.
During this process, a study came out about parking and, you know, work that's urban communities. And a lot of these apartment complexes, its garages, this notion of we need the vehicle is not living up to those expectations when these original ordinances for communities were drafted years back. We see a lot of times, you know, big shopping centers, issue to see if asphalt building their cars. The RSIS is a maximum parking requirement you can impose on a project. So there was some universal, like, Newark's parking requirements, when they'd be different than, let's say, Montclair's, right? One of the land use was the same, because that's how it was some time ago. So the RSIS is a maximum you can impose on land use. And again, during this initial process, a white paper broke out from Rockhurst that said, these parking requirements need to be reassessed, these parking stalls are vacant essentially. And when we look at affordability, right, to design a multi-tiered deck, I think we went into some discussion, because parking is a huge concern for any community. Requiring parking, it also makes the rent higher. A parking stall from initial assessment, it came out to $33,000 per stall in a parking deck for these apartment complexes. So these developers are charging more because they accommodate their vehicle, and they say, parking deck is empty, especially in these urban environments. Now, if this project were to be part of some really rural where there's not that walkability and that access to mass transit, it's a different conversation. I think that's what Brian was getting at, Mr. Banda. But in this ability on Washington Avenue, you will walk across the street for instance, versus getting your car kind of charged. So that, you know, there's that component to it.
And also, you said about eight visitor spot, or five visitor spots, which, I'm just, how would the visitors or the commercial spaces get entered a garage? Because then we approved some projects and they'll have gates on them. If you're going to a nail salon or a pizza parlor on the first floor, how do you get in brush?
Those are really for the employees, so those spaces.
The visitor, the visitor parking, my experience, because, you know, I do, I live in an apartment complex. You, some of them are different, but I can send you a QR code as a visitor. When you come up, it reads it and it lets you in, right? There's many different styles of how a visitor can access a closed garage.
And again, when we look at Washington Avenue, we're looking at a downtown, so a lot of this stuff. And one of the things that I hope the council is taking seriously is acquiring, in any which way, municipal parking lots. I mean, that's going to be big for Washington Avenue as we try to breathe some kind of life back into it and to get better uses of storefronts. So to get better uses of storefronts, you need disposable income and you need parking, right? So we're trying to go after two. One is through higher-end developments on the avenue. Two is through new store spaces just in general, that or modern, higher roofs, better ventilated, everything. And the other piece would be going through municipal metered parking lots. Even in Silver Lake, right now, we're trying to find more. We're trying to find several across Washington Avenue. If you want to talk about Franklin Avenue, Franklin 11th, we just went over that one, behind Wawa, that's not a downtown space. We're not finding municipal lots all over this place. That's why we require them to pave it out, additional 160-something spaces just for the retail uses. So they're two very different locations, and that's why there's kind of two different approaches to it.
All right.
Well, I agree with you, right? It's what happens is, it's also, you know, the renter may want convenience and park on the street instead of in the parking lot. In parking spaces, or they go across-
Which creates a problem for everybody who's already living there.
And I totally agree with you, but then now comes to accountability in our own town, that meter, wants to meter, and they're not paying, they need to be taken, it needs to be enforced. So it's a snowball effect, and I'm with you, I hear you, parking, I agree with that.
Mr. Dowdell?
Yeah, I just wanted to add one point as part of the redevelopment process, and that's not why we're here. It's worth mentioning, to address your concern, Mr. Benaro, is, and as Mr. Banda was saying, we're focusing in the redevelopment process on not asking any redevelopment or redevelopment for this property. And that's not where we are right now. As the process proceeds, we're going to require enhancements, contributions for enhancements to a chimney, for example, down Washington Avenue, to promote walkability for Washington Avenue. So I don't want to say mitigate, but it's not a blind eye towards your concern. It's kind of addressing, as Mr. Doherty said, kind of the nature of Washington Avenue, which is a, I don't want to say commuter thoroughfare, but it's kind of relies somewhat on, we know building anyways, or relies on, you know, to some degree, public transportation. And we're going to, we're going to require contributions on that, wherever it is the ultimate redevelopment is, would kind of enhance those.
In the redevelopment agreement, when it comes to that, can we document or tell them or request that they cannot charge for parking in their, in their rent? You know, I mean, they can't charge extra or whatever.
They have to combine the space with the unit.
Yes, yes, we can, yes. And I just want to clarify, council, what you said earlier, because it's a very specific role that we have. It's very clear in the law where we are right now. Where we are right now is the council adopted an ordinance, which is a zoning ordinance, it's all redevelopment. Refer to this board to review it for consistency review. And for any other comments that you have, send back Mr. Marinello's letter, going back to the council as to what your recommendations are, most importantly, whether it's consistent with the master plan you were testimony. But to answer your question, yes, we can.
And does that come from us now?
No.
Asking that, or when it comes back to us?
That would be a council, that would be, that would be a recommendation that you can make, Mr. Marinello will point out. And that would be, because the agreement is an agreement between the town and the ultimate redeformer, that would be a council action, would not be a planning board action.
And you could, this would be the opportunity to recommend that, whether the council does it or not, it'll be up to the council at the time, but if the-
Oh, I am just bored.
It felt like it wanted to do that, it could recommend it.
Do you have any other comments you have for? I'll open it up to the public. Any questions, Mr. Sheldon?
Good evening again, Michael Sheldon, 47, Floyd Street. First question, based upon Mr. Doherty's testimony, my perception is that there's already a specific site plan drawn up for the redevelopment of the Cazorelli property. He's been specific about the number of units, the breakdown between one-bedroom and two-bedroom units. So am I to understand correctly that a site plan has already been prepared? And if so, does the planning board still have to review that and approve it?
There's always going to have to be a site plan review. We wouldn't know if a site plan exists at this point. The concept of putting these dimensions into this plan, and Alan, you could tell me if I'm wrong, right? But having the two families, the one families, the specific dimensions, is so that this board has an opportunity now to determine whether or not the plan that they're putting together fits within the master plan and depends on the ordinance. If a developer who's ultimately the rede唇er here comes to the board with a site plan application that differs from these specific requirements, they would need variance of people financially. But as long as they keep within the requirements that the redevelopment plan has, they wouldn't need a variance for those particular items.
I understand that.
So this board wouldn't know if a site plan exists already, I have no idea what that means. But it's not unusual, site plan or not, for these things to be in the redevelopment plan. There's always an opportunity, I suppose, if the developer down the road to ask for an amendment to the redevelopment plan, but they would have to come back here.
Well, when the council designated this, gave it a more designation, same time they had announced the developer, Mr. Teflinski and Premier Developers, the same developer who's responsible for the large residential structure south of us on Washington Avenue. Mr. Doherty also mentioned, and I'm glad to hear this, that the facade of the Cazorelli Funeral Home is going to be preserved.
The most, that's the requirement.
That's only two levels. You said there's going to be three more levels along the street. They're going to be set in somewhat?
At a minimum, the requirement's going to be two feet. They can recess it back a little bit more if they wanted to, but they cannot come closer than two feet. But yeah, we're going to reserve by way of extending that and keeping that characteristic. It's just going to be a little bit larger, put the black awnings, the trim work, the brickwork, all the minute details. That is going to be a requirement to build on this site, this facade has to be back in the public room.
So the three other levels that are going to be constructed along Washington Avenue, will that architectural style mimic the Cazorelli facade, or is this going to be something very different?
So we wanted to be tasteful, but we wanted to, that Cazorelli facade to be the main focal point. So we're asking for it to be toned down a little bit, like, we want the beauty to remain on that pedestrian scale, not so much up on top, to where you feel like it's towering over you, like, we were asking for it to be toned down. Almost like, not invisible, but we don't want it to be, we want your eyes to stay.
The first two stories have to be-
Has to be the existing facade, yeah, that image.
I hope when you get to that point, that whatever design you use for the front, those next, those new three levels, that it complements the Cazorelli architecture, this is something completely 180 degrees different than what, so that would be forthcoming when you actually have to do-
Yeah, so there's a requirement of what material is appropriate to be used there. So we're confident in the glazing percentages and so forth, that we'll have a consistent look, but it should be recessed back.
As far as permitted uses for the commercial retail part, which is going to be the Cazorelli, the preserved Cazorelli part, is a museum a permitted use? Mr. Banda probably has the permitted uses memorized. The reason I ask if the museum is permitted use, there's been some discussion amongst residents here in Belleville. They've reached out to the International Sopranos Fan Club to see if collectively, a museum, actual, not just having a piece of artwork or two in the lobby, but to have an actual Sopranos museum rooted in the commercial space. So I'm just curious to know if that should ever become a possibility, if there's interest there, to have a Sopranos museum.
So it allows-
Would that be allowed?
It allows, it does allow pop-up galleries, so galleries can be considered if you're doing arts and stuff like that. So what you're explaining, yeah.
Yeah, it says examples of permitted uses include but are not limited to. So there is some correlation, arts and crafts, activity, business, entertainment, establishment, pop-up storefronts and galleries. You know, they would have to present that to the board and make their case that a museum fits that narrative.
I think it would be a wonderful addition if somehow we could have a Sopranos, rather than just one or two pieces of artwork, or a picture scenes of the various funeral scenes that were shot there by the Sopranos, to have actually something of more significant presence and honor to the Soprano series. And Mr. Noragro, I'm glad you raised the question about having some control over the artwork. I think the last thing we want is a repeat of what faces us on the other side of the town hall. So I'm glad you asked for some control over the type of artwork that may go into this new complex.
And we have to have the council make that ordinance.
Mr. Benaro expressed some concern about Belleville trying to be consistent with the Newark master plan. Boy, I hope that's the wrong direction, in my opinion. I believe we are-
I said more in line with Nutley.
Nutley, right, Nutley.
You said Newark.
Well, Mr. Doherty said, was talking about how these plans are more in line with the Newark master plan, and that's the wrong way to go, in my opinion. I think most of you will agree with us, we have to keep our-
I don't want to cut you short, but your question is right.
Right, well, he raised the Newark, but I hope this board doesn't start worrying about, are we consistent with Newark? We're consistent to ourselves, and as Mr. Benaro said, if we want to parallel any of the community, this way, not that way. The last thing I'd want to add here, there was a discussion about commercial parking, et cetera, and there was a brief discussion here between Mr. Graziano and Mr. Benaro and Ms. Noragro about the commercial garage, the two-level garage that was supposedly going to be constructed on the other side of Washington Avenue. The town hall, Board of Ed, entered into a shared services agreement in April of 2022. They bonded for $11.9 million to facilitate the garage. Board of Ed has already spent $5 million of that $11.9, acquiring the former Eastern International College, leaving them with only $6.9 million. When the board went out to bid last summer for the garage, the lowest bid was $14.5 billion, the highest was $23.5 million. They have nearly enough money to build the garage that they had hoped to build. So, you know, that project is completely up and down. And if any of you were at or listened to our superintendent at last month, or the January meeting, he finally began to sound the alarm about all of these projects. He said that he's already expecting upwards of 270 new students to enter our district in the next couple of years. We're at the breaking point, we don't have the capacity. So he's always throwing out the specter of we're going to have to build new schools, or build additions to our schools. And perhaps that's why Tuesday night, Dr. Tomko informed the board members that he's leaving Belleville as of June 30th, he's going to become the superintendent of Garfield as of July 1st. So it sounds like he wants to get on the dodge while he can, because he's not going to be able to build a garage while he's here. And he has sounded his heartfelt worries about the impact all of this development is going to have on our school system. Mr. Benaro said that very rarely does a two-bedroom apartment not produce at least two cars. A lot of one-bedroom apartments produce two cars, as we all know. So, you know, these calculations you guys used to downplay the parking needs, you know that I have a lot of problems with that, but that'll be further addressed on Tuesday during the special planning board meeting. But I just wanted to get some of those concerns and recommendations out to you so that I know a little bit better what is going to happen on this site. Thank you.
So in regards to that, I did have a chance to speak to Mr. Tomko about the study that he did. And the study that he did was very broad. It didn't really focus in on bedroom counts, types of buildings. It was just a broad brush on units, and it didn't have any other information. So he was coming up with a very high number. If you use, any study that's out there, if you use the Rutgers study, which is the most recent, I think, 2018, based upon our unit breakdown and our pipeline over the next decade and a half, it's 60 kids. I think he had well over 160 kids. So he was off dramatically. And then if you really boil it down to the buildings we've built so far, we've built about 300 units so far, we've only really received four kids out of that. So if you take that number and multiply it times our actual pipeline, that's 12 kids. So there's a variance across that, but Dr. Tomko's was extremely on the far end. And it's not any penalty to him, he just didn't have that full data table that we have and what we do.
And if I may jump on, what else?
So also during that meeting that Mr. Tomko had for the public, and I'm not putting words in his mouth, he did say that he is for pilots, he is for building, that the kids are not coming from there, they're coming from illegal apartments in Belleville of two- and three-family homes. And those need to be addressed through our code department and the relationship between the Board of Education and the town. That's what he said, the number is creeping up, not so much on the building of new units. You can go watch it, that's my speech.
That's definitely a fact, because for 30 years, we've been trying to stop these old apartments which keeps coming.
And the worst part is now people are renting out bedrooms, basements. It's not even an illegal apartment and basement or the attic, it's in their unit, they have a four-family, a family of four living in a single bedroom made for one or two people.
May I just add something to what Mr. Banda said?
One second.
Quick, quickly. During Dr. Tomko's address in January, he mentioned that the analysis was done by the board's demographer, Whitehall Associates. When I was on the board, we were using the same demographer as well as when Mr. Graziano was a board member. Dr. Tomko was very explicit. He said that the projection over the next few years was 200, I think he said 269. It was 260-plus students. He also added that in just the last year, of nine two-family houses that had been approved, I think by this board, with 18 total approved, but of the nine that had already been approved, two-family houses, those nine two-family houses had contributed- those nine two-family houses had contributed fifteen new students to the district. So it's more than one, almost two students per, per unit. And that's just why he, he, he was genuinely mortified about what was going on. And I, you know, I thanked him, I'd been thanking him for finally himself publicly acknowledging what I and Mr. Francis Tony and a handful of others have been warning was going to happen to our district. You guys are the planning board, you're supposed to be looking at the big picture, what's gonna happen to this township twenty, thirty, forty years from now. And, you know, we, these large projects, the demographers apparently didn't even include them in their calculations because they're not finished yet, they don't have COs. So, you know, we're gonna prob, potentially wake up to a nightmare situation within the next few years when we have a thousand new students and know where to put them. And then what are you going to do? I guess you'd become planning board members in, at Garfield.
Yeah. Mr. Dr. Tomko?
I'm sorry, I just wanna clarify, I don't wanna belabor it. As part of a redevelopment plan, a planner is required to review redevelopment plans of all adjacent municipalities. I think as well as the county master plan, transportation plan, as well as the state redevelopment plans, mention that. I don't, I just wanted to make it clear, Mr. Benaro, there's no intent to make Belville like Newark.
That's what it sounded like.
It's not, but, but as a planner, he's required to review the redevelopment plans and how this plan, uh, relates to other redevelopment plans in other towns. So that's just a requirement. To your point, though, well, going forward, we're gonna add Newark, uh, Nutley. We're gonna, we're gonna add Nutley and we're gonna maybe, maybe other towns that, that are appropriate. Um, uh, I noticed that, that Nutley's not in this, I don't know if it was in prior plans, but we'll ask that, that the planners talk about that. The other thing I wanted to make sure clear, because we need to recite, we need to...
I just wanna make sure that I understand this right, because I think, I think I did. The review of the other towns' master plans is not to make this plan more like those plans.
No, absolutely not.
It's just to determine whether or not it's, causes a problem for those plans or makes those plans, causes an inconsistency for those plans. It's not really being done, it's not being done at all to compare our plan to those and make it more like those. Whether that was true in Nutley either, it's really the same thing. The concept is, is, the planner's job is to look at those to make sure it's not creating an inconsistency. For instance, if this development was right on the border of Newark and Newark had a redevelopment plan across the street, this redevelopment could affect the redevelopment that's across the street in the other township. So that, that's the reason why this is being done. It's not being done because we're attempting, I don't say we, I mean, Belville isn't attempting to create a circumstance that's more like Newark.
Correct, that's exactly right.
But it has to do this for, for consistency purposes for this plan.
Thank you, that's exactly right. The other point I wanted to raise is that, because we need to be very precise in our words, we're not preserving the existing facade. We are...
Replicating it.
We, we are setting a criteria in the redevelopment plan which would require any future, any, the ultimate redeveloper to design a building which, which was the direction of this board, the awning, the brickwork, the, the two-level, uh, base, as you already said. But it's just, I wanna be clear, I, I view preservation as one thing. I don't, I, I, this is, this is gonna be a new facade, which kind of hearkens back, for lack of a better term, of what was previously...
Replicating it.
Replicating. Some degree, replicates meaning looks like it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone else in the public have any questions? I'm gonna see none, um, we can proceed.
Oh, we're approving or recommending anything? Are we recommending anything for the parking?
Parking, the parking and the ordinance for possibly, uh...
Park.
All right, park law.
So let me just make sure that... The recommendation would be that parking be included with the rental unit and that, um, the board consider an ordinance, creating some kind of a art committee to review this?
Two standards, going forward.
What? Exterior art project.
Are there any other conditions? Any conditions? And, um, are you ready to vote on this?
Yeah.
Give a motion?
Motion.
Second? Local. Chairwoman Novara?
Yes.
Vice Chair Benaro?
Yes.
Banda?
Yes.
Benaro?
Yes.
Graziano?
Before I vote, I'm gonna share with my colleagues that, um, I was not for this project coming to this board from the council level last week. Why? Was because, um, there's other projects in flight within the same developer that have not been completed and have went past their time and other projects in flight. I felt from the council that they should finish one before moving to another, like any other developer. So that being said, I was the only one that did that up there because I wanna see progress in Belville. I wanna see things developed, I wanna see them come to closure and then move on to the next one. That's why I said no. So I will be consistent in my vote across the board about this, even though it's only about zoning. So all it is is to conform to zoning, but I stay true to myself in what I do, so my act, so mine is a no. That's all.
Woman?
Yes.
They vote for it?
Yes.
Senator Barry?
Yes.
So just so everybody on the board is clear, what that means, that vote means is that you're authorizing me to send a letter to the mayor and council saying that the board considered this at this meeting tonight and that, uh, the board's review is that it is consistent with the master plan and zoning plan of the township. And I will include, obviously, those two recommendations that we just put into the record, okay?
It's unfortunate you had to tell us stories, because one project should be completed before another.
Well, yeah, as, as we go forward, there'll be more conversations on other projects as they evolve.
Just maybe a couple seconds. Okay, thank you. So, uh, we continue with Board Vance nine dash twenty-four, two oh two, two fifteen, Belville Avenue. Are you ready?
Yes. Good evening, uh, so this particular project, uh, the former website gentleman's club with the associated parking lot, uh, across the street. Uh, for, for context, where we're at, you know, it's been a while since, uh, we initially did the study. Again, it was found to be an area to redevelopment. This site and this plan is unique. I have two separate, uh, properties that are not adjoining, they're across the street. So, um, how do you plan and develop that, you know, as far as, uh, uh, land use and what these plans? So it's almost like two plans in one here. Um, so, uh, we kind of broke it down and thought about it, I had some conversation, uh, with council. Um, we categorize it Subzone A and Subzone B. So we're gonna just go through that, uh, for you here and give you the breakdown of what, where, which zone that is in relation to the existing built environment, um, and, and that capacity. So for purposes of the, um, Subzone, mind myself where I might, uh, put it here. Subzone A is gonna be the parking lot and Subzone B is going to be the former, uh, gentleman's club known as Web. Uh, so Subzone A, it's an interior lot. And if those are familiar with it, it has some residential dwellings, uh, uh, associated on, on, on either side in the next seven eleven, uh, one more lot over on the left. So with that being said, um, Subzone A, I felt was, was more appropriate, uh, to continue that residential narrative. Um, ran into the same issue that we were discussing moments ago, parking. It's a tight lot, um, but it's a fairly large lot, it's an existing parking lot. Uh, so with Subzone A, we looked at residential and with newer development, and again, the, the identity of the community, uh, we, we took great care into design elements and the facade features that would be applicable for this. So it, it has some, some, uh, conformity with the neighborhood. But in general, um, the overall, uh, property itself would be, uh, residential overparked. Uh, with that being said, I have for, uh, Sub, Subzone A, a total of seventeen units we felt was appropriate for this site, wouldn't be overdevelopment. Um, with that being said, for new modern, uh, living conditions, uh, this, this particular location, again, will be required to have limited spaces by way of gym, communal, uh, kitchenette area, communal, uh, space, as well as an outside terrace. Uh, with that being said, given that would be over, uh, parking, the collective height would be four stories. So again, design element-wise, to recognize that this would be a, a, a little bit larger than, uh, uh, standard structure for the neighborhood, the fourth floor would be designed in what we would call an answered roof, uh, where instead of it being a top floor, it almost looks like, like an older style, uh, architect where the roof kind of slopes forward. So to kind of soften that, that visual element, uh, we, we, we took great care into that design. Overall, the permitted height would be no higher than forty-six feet. Uh, we don't want to breach fifty, we don't want, uh, do that. So, uh, when we look at the requirements for the parking, uh, we broke it down again to the, uh, twenty-five, seventy-five percent ratio, as we just initially discussed. Again, seventeen units being an appropriate density. A two-bedroom unit makeup of twenty-five percent would equate to four point two five two-bedrooms. So four two-bedrooms, um, and then the number of studios and or one-bedrooms would be, uh, that seventy-five percent makeup, which would equate to twelve point seventy-five percent, uh, of, of the building makeup. Um, we have the, uh, the overall building, it's just, it's just really just a residential building. Again, the floor-to-height requirement would be ten feet for the floor. Um, and we have the parking, the one-to-one parking ratio with the fifteen percent EV requirement as state law would require. Um, and we have, again, the minimum bike storage requirement would be one per residential unit, so seventeen bike storage would have to be required to encourage those residents, um, uh, to, to get out of the vehicle and to bike and to walk. To help encourage that walkability that is expressly outlined in the master plan and goals and intents of, of the master plan, we took great care in Subzone B, which is the former, uh, gentleman's club, um, which we'll get to in a, in a moment. For prohibited uses, uh, for this site, if, if the residential does not manifest, we certainly do not want, uh, a, a land use that is detrimental to the area. If we recall, the last time I was here doing the, the initial study, the, the police report, uh, for this general, uh, uh, corner here was, was extensive. Um, so we, we wanna hedge that with auto, auto and auto repair, our sales, auctions, gas stations, car washes, private parking lots, self-storage facilities, motels, lumberyards, junkyards, uh, open-air storage, sales. Um, so we wanna encourage residential here, uh, so, uh, we felt it was compatible. Uh, with that being said, Subzone, um, Subzone B, we felt was unique. The intent here is more of a neighborhood commercial type use. Uh, with that, we wanna keep the, uh, the building footprint, the building designs, not a really tall building, uh, unlike the across the street or, or same, well, maximum four stories. We're filling in that missing void from the public ground that used to be a, a surface parking lot. I think it'd be good, uh, tran, uh, transformative piece there. With this existing building, we wanna maintain that lower-profile building in that corner as we turn down Smith and more to the residential neighborhood there. So a one-and-a-half story, uh, is, is, is where we're at there, one-story building. We don't want, you know, to go too, too tall, we wanna keep that existing, uh, community fabric there. But with this particular property, again, parking being the issue, um, in a neighborhood commercial, it's a tight, uh, facility, um, what we wanna encourage is public parking. Uh, so in this plan, there was great care. So seven of the parking stalls that would be associated with the site, uh, parking requirements, seven of these will have to be for public parking and meter. Um, so anybody who's coming, uh, that be, be looking for parking, there will be associated parking that you could, you could find here at this, at this location. Um, there'll be a minimum, uh, uh, requirement of nine parking stalls. So seven of those nine will be for public use. Um, with that being said, Subzone B, the requirements here and, and the bulk requirements, given that we have residential, uh, we want the minimum rear setback to be sixty feet. We don't want the building on top of the, the adjacent residential property. Building coverage, again, a small, compatible building of what was there. Um, thirty-six percent of the lot could be covered by a building. Impervious coverage to accommodate the, the parking requirement would be ninety-five percent. That additional five percent, we are allocating towards the, uh, buffer requirements that we're gonna need between a commercial use and the residential. So we'll hug the corner coming around Smith, um, uh, as far as the building footprint and a parking lot we envisioned coming off of, uh, on Smith, we'll have that additional buffer strip there and some, and footman's gaping. So a maximum build-out coverage there would be, uh, ninety-five percent. Uh, with that being said, the overall onsite parking requirements, as, as I said, will be nine. We'll have that fifteen percent requirement for the state EV, seven of those nine will be for public parking. Uh, and the, the overall building height, one-story building, we don't, we wanna keep that existing, uh, fabric small on the corner, and, and we're gonna fill that missing void with no, no more than a five-story, uh, sorry, a four-story structure. And that, that includes it being overparked. So, uh, with that being said, as a general breakdown for, for thi- this Subzone B, Subzone A, again, A being the parking lot, B being the gentleman's club, uh, B being a, a neighborhood commercial, a concept corridor to help support that population, again, being on, on Belville Avenue. We felt it had good exposure, good curb appeal, aesthetics is gonna be everything. But in that permitted use, uh, for Subzone B, we'll get that off to... Permitted uses for this, uh, neighborhood commercial use concept would include bakeries, butchers or delis, pizzerias, ice cream parlors, cafes, restaurants, uh, luncheonettes, that kind of professional offices, maybe banks without a drive-through, tutoring, daycare, indoor recreational facilities, arts and fitness, drugstores, limited neighborhood retail. Um, so I read that to you because on your current version, um, two, three uses were in, in, are, are your version that, uh, we'd like to take, take out for discussion. It's gonna be, um, you have in there tattoo parlors, nail salons and, uh, a laundry mat. After discussion, after typing this out and, 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 and in that regards, uh, we'd like to amend page twelve to exclude those as permitted uses. They're a little too intense for the, uh, envision of, of neighborhood commercials. So your document in front of you has three that I took out. And, and I have an amended, uh, sheet, if you'd like to see that. Um, that's initially in the document and council will, will coordinate and, and make sure going forward, that's the one. But for permitted uses on page twelve would be bakeries, butchers and delis, pizzerias, ice cream parlors, cafes, luncheonettes, restaurants without drive-throughs, professional offices such as, but not limited to, medical, legal, accounting. We have, uh, banks without drive-throughs, tutoring and daycare facilities, indoor recreational facilities, arts and fitness studios, drugstores and limited neighborhood retail. Done. No tattoos, no nail salons and hair salons and, 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 uh, no laundry mats. Those three you have, we're taking those out.
So the, there's a new page twelve?
Yes, I have.
Okay. So a new page twelve is what we're considering, we're not considering the old page twelve.
The only real difference, bike use, the verbiage is different, but, um, we took out on your sheet F, G and O.
And you added a...
Took those out. Yeah, and just re, re-tried, uh, modified the verbiage, but it's essentially the same permitted uses.
Yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and do a few other things.
Yeah. But for the neighborhood commercial concept, the, um, the permitted uses is, um... If you wanted to look at it side by side, that page twelve versus this page twelve, F G and O are really looking out of permitted use, took those out. Prohibited uses as a catch-all. To prohibit uses under section twenty-three dash seven point seven D, which is the underlying zoning. So what's existing there today, we don't want those there going forward. And we just specified, again, the auto repair, auto sales, gas station, car washes, private parking lots, self-storage, drive-off facilities of any kind, hotels, lumber yards, smoke shops, liquor stores, massage parlors, schools, and in-use not described as a permitted use. So what we want to see on that corner for a neighborhood commercial standing is what would be permitted, A through M, as I read out, and it's on that sheet you had.
Quick question.
Yes.
Is cannabis dispensary allowed?
I personally feel like it would fall under smoke shops, so it would be a prohibited use.
So one of the things that we added was uses prohibited, twenty-three dash seven dash seven D. So that's to capture all the stuff that's prohibited in the BA district, which this resides in. So I believe we, in our last ordinance update, we prohibited all the cannabis uses. We prohibited smoke shops. We prohibited consignment, massage. We prohibited a bunch of other things that we felt, if you remember, that were kind of no good for a, kind of a district that we're trying to pitch more towards the surrounding neighborhoods, the families and whatnot. And get some things that we don't have in town, like butchers, or delis, or bakeries, ice cream parlors, something. I don't know.
So with this, this plan having a small uptick in population density, with the already well-established residential neighborhood back there, we felt a neighborhood commercial use that would service that neighborhood versus, you know, being a gentleman's club over the years that really doesn't service, you know, the neighborhood collectively, was more appropriate for a real complete one-eighty turnaround for that corner and that intersection there. And again, there's some design features, you know, real, we're talking about real boutique kind of design elements here for awnings to be over the main corridor, the building facade, if you will, that was facing more the residential on Smith, you know, to break it up, you know, as we mentioned the prior one, sustainable building practices, a living green wall would be required, you know, in that regards. So it would be a modern build-out that would boast well with today's building practices. So we'd ask for, you know, typical ornamental harnesses and that regards and trim work to be associated here. So it wouldn't be too new of a modern architectural style that would be out of character, so it would play well coming around that corner. But with that being said, the overall build-out, again, is to have a small building, again, that existing building footprint's small, and to really transform that missing gap in the public realm with the parking lot, a residential building of no more than four stories would be there, of seventeen units. And then when we look at the intent of the goals of the master plan, and the overall BA zone, as we indicated, we certainly want to keep consistent with the BA zone, and for purposes of the local ordinance and the master plan here. Then we have language that we've just heard before about encouraging different housing types, variety housing types, the whole levels, appropriate higher densities. Given this is not even on Washington Avenue, seventy-five units may not be appropriate. I think seventeen is certainly what goes well. We have to encourage a balance of land uses that are diversified by residential and commercial, to service the residents of the communities. So we're trying to bring it in with that subzone B for that neighborhood commercial. With that being said, we want to improve the existing landscapes and the aesthetics and the walkability of the corridor, and that's why we have the small density uptick with the land use there. We want to incorporate sustainable initiatives of green buildings. We're doing that here. Improve parking standards for residential, commercial, communal parking. We're hitting that on the head here with the additional nine, nine parking, seven of those being required. Encourage separation of abutting property lines, rid of residential dwellings. Again, we took that into consideration. In this plan, there's certain some language that's going to require some separation of that commercial use with that residential block on Smith there. So with that being said, the overall master plan we feel is consistent as well as the underlying zone plan there. When we look at state plan, again, responsible for state's development and redevelopment is the P A one, state every ones. So we have an infill of vacant lot, the parking lot. Most appropriately hit that goal as well. And with that, I'll conclude. This is a really relatively spot on with the locals' undertone zoning ordinance of the BA, and as well as filling that gap, putting residential in a residential setting we felt was appropriate.
Any questions from the board? Opened up to the public. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Sheldon?
Mr. Sheldon, I think I've learned my lesson. I'm going to swear you in. Now, well, now you're going to do a question. You always seem to have both, so let's just do it. That's in perpetuity. You swear in a testimony, you shall give, shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Okay. Now, if you have questions or testimony, you can go ahead with it.
Michael Sheldon, forty-seven Ford Street. Mr. Banda already answered one question I was going to ask, and that was just to confirm that this project is going to, is in the BA zone, it would constitute a BA zone. Correct me if I'm wrong, but for most of the BA zone, which was implemented, expanded BA zone, which was implemented in July of two thousand nineteen, the height restriction for most of the BA zone is four stories, except last year, a slight modification was made for the three corners, the intersections of Graylock and Union, Drawlum and Street and Union, and Belleville Avenue and Union, where you would allow four stories. But this, with the wet club, we're all happy, relieved to see WET going away finally at long last. But where WET stands, that's not really on the corner of Belleville and Union. Mr. Doherty said that the intention was to build a four-story structure there. So if that's correct, wouldn't that necessarily mean that this would have to go for the zoning board for height variance?
No. I know you're asking him, but I'm going to give you the answer.
All right.
I can, I can give a little bit of an answer. So this is a redevelopment area, and redevelopment areas for setting the zoning. But it's still for...
Never mind, never mind. You got me. It's a redevelopment area, so that...
But I'll answer, I'll answer the question for you anyway. So, yeah, a little while back, we did do a change, but we changed the entire district that allowed four-story. Throughout the, throughout the whole district, not every corner, you've got a four-story. We didn't like that. We wanted to shrink it. So, but we still wanted to try to find an idea where we can say, you know, the people, we'll give you a little bit of extra density if you provide us some sort of public parking. So at these corners, we chose, they were kind of major corners, spread out throughout the district, kind of good locations to try and grab some public parking for the other businesses, the other stores and whatnot. So when you look at this, it is slightly off of the corner, but it still kind of is catching the concept of where, what we were going for. So in terms of discussing this and kind of come up with something, as you can see, we did get public parking out of it. So it kind of hit that goal anyway, and that's one of the reasons why four stories was considered on this. So...
The fact that it's a redevelopment area makes all the difference in the board's life. I guess, again, I withdraw that question. I didn't answer that. At one point, Mr. Banda made a comment about how he would like to see more ice cream shops and bakeries and delis here. It seems to me that we once had a lot of those. By recent years, they're all closing up and selling, so all of these very intensive mixed-use facilities can be built. So I don't really have a lot of hope that we're going to ever realize, again, our so-called beautiful village status. What we seem to be heading towards is a Hoboken type of landscape. And Ms. Delaford is not here right now, but she, I know she and I are alumni of Stevens. We spent a lot of years. The Hoboken has a unique charm, but I don't think Hoboken could ever work in Belleville. We're not right across the Hudson River from Manhattan. The last thing I wanted to say, at the end of the last section, Mr. Marionello addressed the fact that we have no intention of becoming Newark, that the reference to the New York master plan, which is that we don't do anything here that's grossly inconsistent with what Newark wants to do. So it raises the question, I wonder if the planners and the planning boards in Bluefield and Montclair have ever heard Belleville, because a lot of what they've done, and especially in recent years, those large developments in their centers have caused nightmarish traffic situations here. We only, everyone comes through Belleville Avenue. Fortunately, well, fortunately, unfortunately, Mr. Frantatoni isn't here tonight to reiterate that, but you've heard him talk at length about what happens in...
I think we all live in it.
Right, well, we all do, right. But, you know, I, it seems that all of this consideration and respect of nearby communities may be a one-way situation, and we're going to afford it to Newark and Nutley, but our neighbors don't want to reciprocate. So just something to keep in mind here. I don't think that this is a universal rule on the basis of what's happening to our town and the traffic effects that we've had to suffer because of all of the massive redevelopment in nearby communities.
I mean, I just want to make, we're not, we're not, I don't, I don't think we're trying to be Newark. I don't think we're trying to be Nutley. I mean, Newark has forty-story high-rises going up and a totally different industrial use on Broadway coming down into Washington Avenue. And then when you get down to the Nutley side, you know, you have a totally residential use. Our downtown is Washington Avenue, Nutley's downtown is Franklin Avenue. Franklin Avenue or Belleville is residential use. So I think Belleville's trying to be its own thing. If you talk about some of the buildings that we're building, and you compare them to the old buildings in towns and along these avenues, I mean, you go down Union Avenue, there is a mix of mixed-use buildings that are two- and three-story tall. Those are older buildings that have no parking. When we try to rebuild the same thing based on modern standards and needs of parking, we're looking at building basically a story of parking, or not doing anything at all, if you don't want to have that extra story of parking. We can't do it. Same thing with Washington Avenue. I mean, we're talking about the Essex right over here, that's still in the process of being built. That used to be a four-story mixed-use building, then it burned down, then it was an empty car lot, which we don't get much taxes from, and it doesn't do much for the downtown. But in rebuilding it, there's still a four-story residential building there, just with two levels of parking underneath it. So I think we're building to Belleville's bones. We're just doing it in a way that meets modern standards. And a lot of those other storefronts, the ice cream parlors that used to be on that corner, they closed up a long time ago. And we put a seven-eleven in their place, or we put a convenience store in their place. I mean, it all depends upon having the right demographic there, and I do hope that we were building desirable places and desirable neighborhoods where people feel safe, and people feel like they want to walk to, and they want to, or drive to a park at if they can get the parking. And they will bring those businesses back, you know. And in terms of the entire region, yeah, Washington Avenue, Belleville, Belleville Ave, those are, those are roads that go through the entire region, and they go out into Jersey City and to downtown Manhattan. Everybody's taking those roads. So, yeah, they are, the other municipalities all the way up are building and are causing more traffic for us. We could have all vacant land, and we'd still have a ton of traffic going up and down those corridors because of everybody else. I mean, if you look, you can go all the way up past Verone, you go out into Morris County, they're building single-family homes, they're building townhouses, they're building, my brother bought a house in Mount Vellum Pine Brook. Just in his neighborhood in Pine Brook, they built over a thousand residential, they're building over a thousand residential apartment buildings, on top of also new single-family developments. All those people have to drive back this way. So it's all of them, all the way out of the Morris County, that are causing more traffic to come down this way. So it's a regional thing, and it's really regional planning that needs to correct that, but it's nothing we can do at this level. And to stalemate ourselves because other people want to rebuild their neighborhoods and earn tax dollars and bring in good residents and businesses, that would be stupid of us. Over something that we can't control, it's just going to get worse, unless the state and the upper levels do something. So I don't think we're trying to be Newark. I don't think we're, we're going to try to be Nutley, because I don't know if that's possible either. But we got, we got to be who we are. I do think that we're doing this.
Real quick, Brian. Newark had proposed branch book towers on the corner of Franklin Street, Franklin Avenue, that's right on the corner of our town. They proposed a forty-story, one point seven million, thousand fifty units, like fifty feet from our town. Did they consider Belleville? Did they come to our lesson and say, is this consistent with your master plan? I don't even know how that's possible.
And it's a crime which they constantly have problems with. It's like they don't, nothing's consistent with our surplus land that they do. They don't care.
We do with the pine.
Yeah.
Can I just have a thirty-second follow-up from Mr. Banda? I promised thirty seconds.
Counting.
All right. Mr. Banda, I appreciate the fact that you're determined not to see Belleville transform into a propolis with gigantic multi-story skyscrapers. But as some of the veteran members of the planning board can attest, Mr. Alguarado, Mr. Banero, back in two thousand twelve, previous administration granted, like, there was a plan, which this board actually at that time approved, to put four fifty-story buildings where the kitty site is, where the across the motorcycle, all the way down the valley. They were going to put four fifty-story towers, I think it was seven thousand or nine thousand units. They were talking about building their own tunnel from Belleville into New York City, having a heliport to take high-profile types from Manhattan back to Belleville. But the fact of the matter is, that got approved by the planning board at that time. And it was only when the community learned about it, those, those of us who make trouble for everybody, we let everyone know what was in the works, and the community showed up in force, and Mayor Kimball, and Councilman Kennedy, and Reverend, all the others unanimously seven-zero. They said, no way, we could never allow a project like this. So it's within the realm of possibility, and I realize I'm over my thirty seconds, you know, I'll let it to you back in some other, but, but, you know, we have to be cognizant of the fact that weird things can happen here. I wish you the commitment to not letting Belleville become a major city, but I always have to be on the guard because of what's happened not that long ago, probably twelve years ago, we would have been transformed, not into Newark, we would have become good town Manhattan.
I read about that.
I have the videos, by the way, if you ever want to see the plans, if you ever want to see them.
I'll watch them.
All right, I will, I will. I'll send you the link.
Anyone else would like to speak? All right, our vote is public portion, and we have a motion on the floor for Mr. Graziano. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call. Chairwoman in Rob?
Yes.
Vice Chair Banero?
Yes.
Banda?
Yes.
Trinata?
Yes.
Remiana?
Yes.
Guammin?
Yes.
Netherford? Okay, McGarry?
Yes.
Thank you. Would you like to have a five-minute break? Or can I get a motion for a five-minute break?
Motion.
Second. All right, five minutes, we will be back.